Twenty twenty-three, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, first up is Dr. Smith.
All right.
Our student member and superintendent reports.
Yes, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The big event that we had over the last couple of weeks has been the new teacher orientation. So, we roll and we do all of our work as we close out June and then in July, we're furiously going hither and yon, doing hiring and curricular resources and professional development and taking care of all of the things that need to be done in our buildings. August starts and we have A N S and we welcome back all of our administrators and all of our eleven-month staff. And then the following week, new teachers show up. So, last week on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we had over a hundred and twenty-five new teachers come into Saint Mary's County Public Schools. On Wednesday, they spent the day at their schools. Because what we, what we used to do is we, if you'll remember, we'd bring them all in and we'd have a big hoopla and we'd have a whole bunch of people talking to them all day long. And they would sit there, you know, very attentive and what have you, but they hadn't yet visited their school and their classroom. And so, in the back of their mind, they're like, well, this is all nice, but I really want to see where I'm teaching and where all my stuff is. So, for this year, we modified the order and the very first day, they just got to go to their school and talk with their principal and see their classroom and spend the better part of the day just moving into their space. I really think that that was warmly received because when they, when we did our first day then all gathered together on Thursday of last week, they seemed pretty relaxed and communicative and there was a lot of table talk back and forth. There was a lot of really great sharing. It was, it was a fantastic day. The, the morning was really introducing them to the county, to the, to Eric Colvin came out and he gave a great shout-out for Saint Mary's County Public Schools as a, as a, as a product of Saint Mary's County Public Schools and as a consumer of said product of Saint Mary's County Public Schools with his, his, his child starting at the Chesapeake Public Charter School and as his sister is working at Lexington Park Elementary School. So, our county commissioners, our, our, certainly that county commissioner is directly involved in the work of Saint Mary's County Public Schools and that was great. And then Ms. Bailey brought greetings and then I spoke to them a little bit about, don't be overwhelmed. Everything that we're doing today is really a version of what we did yesterday and last year and last decade. And education is, is truly the, the business of being with people. And when you start with our mission statement, you know, know the learner and learning, expecting excellence in both, educate all with rigor, relevance, respect, and positive relationships. That was my only job was I had to just give them the, the mission statement and then have them understand that those are twenty-two words that aren't just, they're not just words for the sake of words. We really try to live them. And the extent to which we live them is the extent to which we're, we're successful and happy in our work. So, what's really interesting is that Dr. Marr and doing research, because we were doing throwback. So, we're talking about timeline. And do you realize that the first consolidated schools in Saint Mary were recorded in seventeen seventy-four? So, in twenty twenty-four, we will be celebrating two hundred and fifty years of education in the mother county. That's pretty cool. And we really wanted to emphasize with the people coming on board this year, you know, that's an incredible legacy and they're part of that legacy. They're part of that, they're part of that story. And then we did a whole, you know, from the, all the different, all the different logos that we've had throughout the years up to our brand-new one that we've been using for the last couple of years. It's in full color with a Maryland flag and the book and it opens and there's a sale. It's a great logo. Uh-oh, we got skewed there. They were all lined up. Employment opportunities. There is still a great need for people to join Saint Mary's County Public Schools. And if you are not interested in becoming a classroom teacher, there are things for you to do outside of education. We desperately, we desperately need people with fiscal management, money, background, accountants. We need building service workers. We need maintenance workers. We need media clerks. We need bus drivers, assistants. We need pair educators. We need all kinds of specialists, computer support specialists, people who would help me so that all my stuff would be lined up. That would be great. Food service workers. As we go into community eligibility program, C E P schools, where we have several schools that will be serving breakfast and lunch to all students for free, we're going to need people to, to help with that. So, it's going to be food service workers. Teaching vacancies, as always, we need special education teachers and we will never stop needing special education teachers. So, if you want to be in a guaranteed employment, recession-proof, professional pathway, special education. We also need a handful of secondary science. We need a hand, we need one social studies. We need a couple of English teachers. We need a couple of math teachers, speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, instructional resources. I am pleased to say that we are down to, we believe, seventeen vacancies at the, at the school level for classroom and direct classroom support positions. So, from way up here, we're whittling it, it down. And for the, the few classes where we haven't been able to secure a, a teacher as of yet, the individual schools, we have, we have plans and put in place for long-term substitutes and highly qualified staff to kind of get us through the beginning of it. But we, we definitely, we still need you. We absolutely need you. So, please hit the big red button, W W W S M C P S dot org and take a look at all the opportunities that are available because we, we do still have a few openings for just the right people. Where in August, we had new teachers. Today, the sixteenth, all of our teachers are in the building. As of today, as of eight fifteen this morning, all twenty-three-hundred-plus employees are reporting to work. They are on the job and they are getting ready for kids. So, today is a professional day for staff. They're in, they're doing the same thing that the new teachers did last week. They're getting everything ready in their classroom. Tomorrow, they're going to be working with their school staff and then on Friday, they get content-oriented, all the new information. Next Monday and Tuesday, we have open houses and on the twenty-third, schools open. So, we are that close. So, once again, join us. We still have a few, a few more opportunities. Back-to-school information. On our website, if you click, if you go to S M C P S dot org, just type in S M C P S, where what comes up. The very first thing you're going to see on the landing page is a big, huge splash screen that says, "Back-to-school info." If you click on that, you get, you go right to a landing page that has everything. Open house, school supplies, registration and vaccination information, bus information, student lunch information, all the school year calendars, and then there's dropdowns off to the side. There's all the, all the information is there. Also on that landing page, if you're interested in uploading first day of school photos and then they go into a montage that we then use for all of our screens and we put out in our social media. It's a great way for people to see the excitement of our students as we start our day. All that information is there as well. There's just, it's a lot. So, if you don't know, do not curse the darkness, for goodness sakes. The light is, S M C P S dot org. All the information is there. I also added, if, if you're at your house and you notice that there's a five-year-old running around or there's a five-year-old who will be five by September first, right? So, it's August. So, like, they're pretty close. If you're planning, if you're in your house and you're planning a, a five-year-old's birthday party in the next week or two, they should be registered with Saint Mary's County Public Schools. So, the same site, S M C P S dot org, that goes back to school, there's a whole bunch of links, including student registration information and that takes you to all the required documents, all the immunization information, the registration processes and registration fillable forms. But I am always amazed by people who will be registering their children over the next few days. Please know, we are a people business and we love you and we want to be responsive to you. But if you come into a school on Monday or Tuesday of next week and expect everybody to be lining up to help you with your student's registration, you might not have the best experience that you could. Please, 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 today, tomorrow, Friday, register your child. You, you want your kid to get on that yellow bus on Wednesday. I know, I had three boys. I could not wait. My wife, Michelle, could not wait. We talked to the bus drivers on Monday before they did their dry run and we said, you know, there are like thirty-eight thousand parents who can't wait to see that yellow bus. So, please, register your child. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our student member of the board, Ms. Lily.
Thank you. All right, perfect. So, yes, I hope everyone had a great summer, but the time has come for it to end. So, we're moving on. School is slowly encroaching on us. So, what are we students doing to prepare? Well, of course, fall sports tryouts have begun in high schools and teams, for the most part, have been formed. I have some fun pictures here from these tryouts. We've got some soccer players, some Linnertown cheerleaders and our marching Raiders. And there's another slide. There it is, perfect. We've got like Chopson Golf Kids. They look so cute. We've got some marching Great Mills Kids and more Linnertown Soccer Kids. So, they're looking great. They're having fun out there. And so, with that, I just want to give a big congratulations to everyone who tried out and to everyone who made the team. Anyone who tried at all was extremely brave for putting themselves out there. So, a big pat on the back to you guys. You all did a great job of going out there and representing your school spirit. You may also notice that these school supply sections in Target and Walmart are just totally depleted. There's barely a crumb left. So, sorry seniors who waited until the last minute to get your stuff, because there's nothing left. But it's actually so great because it means that our kids are pumped to be back in school and they are ready to go. And I had a bit of a section about S M C P S dot org and what you can do to prepare, but Dr. Smith stole my thunder with that.
Sorry, sorry.
But all good because we have more to talk about. So, what am I doing to prepare for the new school year? Well, for one, I recently attended an awesome smob orientation that was hosted by Maeve, where I learned all the tips and tricks and the ins and outs about being a smob so that I am best equipped to take on the new school year. I also had the opportunity to meet and get to know all the other smobs around the state who all just totally blew me away with all their achievements and their overall deportment. So, thank you to Maeve for hosting that orientation and allowing us to get our bearings with you. In the student government world, Saint Mary's Association of Student Councils, which is also called S M A S C, which is like our coalition of student governments around the county, has selected our new appointed officers to the board, which means that S M A S C is in motion for the new school year and we can now begin organizing our general assemblies with all the student government associations of all the middle and high schools in Saint Mary's. In those G A's, we'll be able to talk to students about real state-level educationally-related bills and receive their input so that we can take all that back to our representatives in the Maryland General Assembly up in Annapolis during our S M A S C advocacy day next year. So, needless to say, we are rolling in S M C P S. All of our schedules are planned, our pencils are sharpened, and S M C P S is back in business for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Kibler.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right.
Okay, let's see. We don't have any recognitions. Public, any public comment? All right, then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, personnel teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, I T security purchase using Omni Partners contract, I T security purchase using State of Maryland Do-It contract, Department of Equity Engagement and Early Access purchase of materials and professional development from Conscious Discipline, I T security purchase using P E P P M contract for supplemental product line and the White Marsh Elementary School fuel oil line replacement by the Department of Maintenance. So, with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Our first item, as always, Mr. Thompson's, school bus contracts. That time of year.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Great to see everyone. So, we've already begun our school year. So, our buses have been inspected. The drivers, we met with all of them and their excitement on Monday. You know, over three hundred people there. We still have a few more to get to. Yeah, and Tuesday, yesterday, hopefully, everybody did see their yellow buses on the road because we did have our dry run day.
Had my alert.
I, I, I got my alert too. So, everybody, please sign up for the Here Comes the Bus app. It's a great tool and that we get tremendous feedback on. It's really worked well for us. So, we're excited and ready for the new school year. So, today, I'm here to request the approval of the bus contractor agreement and the spare bus agreements for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, this year, we'll have forty-two school bus contractors and those contractors will provide a hundred and sixty-four regular route school buses, which is not a change from last year. So, it's the same, twenty-nine special needs route buses. So, that's not a change either from last year, and then fifty-six spare school buses. We have fourteen replacement school buses. So, replacements, when they get to the end of the twelve years, they replace them with a new bus. They can do a couple of years as a spare, but after fifteen, they have to be off the road by Maryland requirements for public school buses. We have nineteen buses that reach the end of their original six-year contract and they'll enter the second part of their six-year contract to reach the twelve. We'll have fifty-six one-year spare bus agreements. We have eight contracts that have transferred and three contractors that are under new ownership. Two of our contractors, Goldsboro Transportation, that was with us for a long time, they have transferred ownership to a, a current contractor who's taking over. And so, they are no longer going to be a contractor for us. So, they've been a great asset for us for a long time. As well as Higgs Transportation, they've been a contractor with us for a long time. Actually, one of their buses was who transported me to school when I was in elementary school a long time ago. They've been around a long time and so they're getting out of the business at the moment. So, our formula items for this year, we're going to go over a couple of those that are in here. You know, one aspect to remember with our contractors is these are the items as we pay the contractors and we give them the flexibility for how they manage the business and how they manage their money with their drivers, their maintenance, their facilities, those different items. So, the per-vehicle allotment, which is set up to kind of cover the cost of the buses. This year, we use the primary for calculation. We've used for the past several years as a requested by the legislative auditors. The prime rate this year increased quite a bit to six-point-two-five percent. We'll do the calculation in September to prepare for the budget cycle coming up to see what the prime rate's going to be for our P V A coming up for next, for FY twenty-five. We've seen a significant increase in the bus prices this year for the buses coming in and we do expect that to keep going in the future. We have, one of our manufacturers has increased, has changed their models and that price is expected to go up quite significantly. We are, you know, cur, you know, concerned a little bit, I guess, in the future. In a couple of years, they do have a new emissions, they're going to increase the emission standards in two years and it's going to make it even harder and more expensive for those buses to be on the road. And then we have the ever-looming electric bus items, which those buses are tremendously more expensive along with the infrastructure. So, we do expect those prices to keep going up to make an impact on our budget going forward. The hourly payments that we paid to the contractors. So, we have a, the driver rate we paid to the contractors. It's still their choice for how they disseminate that amongst their drivers is twenty-seven, twenty-seven plus the twenty-six-point-five percent fixed cost. The attendant rates, twenty-two, eighty-four, plus the twenty-six-point-five percent fixed cost. We have a minimum that we did for six hours. That actually was increased last year to six and we maintain the six for this coming year. Our operations payment is increased by four hundred dollars per bus. That's for the whole year. Stipend payments, a hundred and fifty dollars for the regular route buses and two-twenty-five for the special needs buses, which cover things like D O T physicals, which are a requirement every year, drug testing, in services, and some other supplies they need for their buses. Our maintenance rate, we've increased that by twelve cents per mile this year, as approved in the budget. That's, a lot of that's based upon the C P I, which increased about eleven percent last year. And we'll be looking at it again. I think there's still going to be a significant increase in the C P I for next year. That'll be consideration for the budget process. Won't be as much, I don't think, as this year, but it's still be significant. So, we'll have to take that in consideration for FY twenty-five. Spare bus stipend, we had an increase of five hundred dollars for the spare, paid spare, an increase of a hundred dollars for the spare bus for the spare bus. And so, I'm asking the Board of Education to approve these items as presented and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have no questions. I'm all good.
In the future, and you talked about E V buses, do you see that being a reliable, financially viable alternative to diesel-powered buses?
Well, there's, there's some benefits in maintenance purposes because they really claim the maintenance is way down. But there are some big concerns. The infrastructure is definitely a huge concern. A lot of people talk about the buses. The buses are nearly over three times the price of a diesel bus. So, that's significant, just the bus itself. And the buses don't get the range currently that the diesel buses do. But the infrastructure is really what we're hearing is the main issue. I mean, they're having to erect sub, power substations in order to, the people that are putting it in place, just the power and provide the infrastructure to power these buses. So, we really see that as a big concern. But as you guys are aware, there's a big push in the state of Maryland especially and nationally for school systems and vehicle fleets to go that route. So, it's definitely a concern that they're going to be able to meet what we need them to do because their range is very low. I mean, typically eight, eighty to a hundred miles is all they'll get on charge. And it takes, the charging process is a, is a problem. Really, you know, Montgomery County for our, is one of the leaders in the country that's doing this, trying to electrify their fleet. They have nearly fifteen-hundred buses and I think right now, they have a hundred of those are electric. So, they're really kind of a test pilot for seeing how this is going to go. But we're hearing a lot of the different challenges that come about with it. So, it's definitely a concern if it keeps getting pushed because of the financial aspect and because of the actual operational aspect, whether it's going to be, you know, viable for school systems to put this forward.
Do you see any subsidies at all, federal or state subsidies in terms of, of transitioning to electric vehicles?
There are some items out there. It's a changing process for what, how they're being granted to different areas. So, they're looking, right now, I think one of them out there is looking at very low-income school systems, which we don't think we'd be qualified for that. And then it's also a challenge with, if you're electrical companies owned or, because the co-op actually caused a little bit of an issue with that and also whether the system owns the buses or is contracted out. Because that's an issue, I think, with contractors because they really want, they're going to need large-scale properties and have these buses consolidated in order to install the infrastructure that's needed for it. So, it's, you know, trying to get those grants and items, it, it, there's a lot of concerns with how that's going to go forward with them. And a lot of them don't cover the infrastructure, which is almost the bigger piece to this whole issue.
Thank you.
And I will say that Maryland's very ambitious in its aspirations to be green. There are also a lot of technologies that allegedly are coming forward. Toyota just had the breakthrough with their solid-state battery, which they claim will be able to be charged in ten minutes and have a range of an exceptional, like five or six times the range that current batteries do. So, we'll see how technology intersects and I will, of all of this, I know that we have a fantastic transport, scholarly person who follows all of this with, with, Mr. Thompson follows all of this. But I think that within the next three to four years, I don't know that this is going to dramatically differ the way we do our business in Saint Mary's County.
No questions. No questions. Thank you. Don't have anything. Mary?
I want to thank you because you were a person who got on that yellow school bus as a young child and you went on to college and did all those wonderful things. And then now you came back and you are in charge of our entire transportation department. So, you are an illustration of students who come back to the school system, who benefited from our school and now got a key position in the school because our school day for most students began with the buses and the bus drivers and it ends with the bus drivers. And I want to thank the school bus drivers for what they do because they can set the tone for the students, for their day and the end of the day. So, we have the best bus contractors and best bus drivers. They are the nicest people you ever want to meet and they love their job and they love those students. And they know their, those students. They know them by name. They know their families. They know everything about them. So, they can understand them and work with our student. They are an important part of the school system to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. I, yeah, I will add, you know, and as you all know, meeting with your colleagues from around the state, I tell this to the drivers and it's a, it's a testament to our drivers and contractors and my office staff and, and the school system and the support that we get. We definitely have one of the most stable systems in the state. And people may not realize it being here because we're not perfect and we have issues. But our bus system, transportation, is one of the most stable. And you can, you only have to go just a few miles and you can see tremendous amount of issues that go on. In some places, there's one county that runs almost three hundred drivers short a day and it's become the norm. The buses don't show up. The buses are late. That's just the norm because it's been that way so long. But here, it's not. We're pretty stable. Our buses run every day. You know, the drivers do a great job. The contractors do a great job. They take a lot of pride in what they do. And our office staff is tremendous people in there that do a great job and take a lot of heart in it.
I, I think, I think Mary said it extremely well. You know, to your point, when we are celebrating drivers that have been with us for forty-plus years, that says a lot. There was a recent story on the news about a school system that had such a shortage of drivers and they did a major overhaul of their routes and kids were in the schools until some as late as getting home at ten o'clock at night. They shut the school system down for at least three days to try to revamp. So, thank you and your staff and our contractors for ensuring that we are not in a position like that.
That we're not in the news. Thank you for keeping us out of the news.
We try. We always try.
Very much appreciated. Very much appreciated. So, thank you.
May I have a motion?
I moved that the Board of Education approve the bus contractor agreement and spare bus agreement for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year as detailed on the list provided by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And you can just roll right into the Health and Welfare Trust.
First, before we begin, I'd like to add a guest with us today, Mr. Kyle, Mr. Kyle Murrow, who's the president of Care Flex, who is the administration of the Contractor Trust. So, he's here to help answer any questions about the trust that you guys may have.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, today, I'm here to request approval for the payment to be made from Saint Mary's County, the Board of Education of Saint Mary's County to the Saint Mary's County School Bus Contractors Health and Welfare Trust in the amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, two-hundred dollars. This was established in two thousand and three, which makes this the twentieth anniversary of the program, which has been a great program and is not common throughout the state. There's really only ourselves in Calvert that run a program like this for our contractor operations. This provides an opportunity for our full-time contracted bus drivers and school bus attendants to purchase health insurance. We provide an annual contribution and any yearly deficits, they're responsible to the trust to cover and not the school system. So, the trust board makes determinations on how the trust moves forward with payments, premiums, those different items. This is available to all the full-time contracted bus drivers and school bus attendants that are on the buses each day. As stated in the last presentation, we have a hundred and sixty-four contracted regular route buses and twenty-nine contracted special needs buses. So, there'll be two spots for the special needs buses, the driver and the attendant. The Insurance Solutions, it used to be the carrier of this under John Frank and Associates, which was acquired by Insurance Solutions in May, two thousand and fifteen. John Frank remains the trust administrator for now. I guess soon, probably, he's trying to phase out into his retirement years. But he's been a great ally and asset for the program and definitely navigator for the program. And currently, the program is managed under Care Flex with Kyle Murrow as the president. Saint Mary's County School Bus Contractors Association, they determine, as mentioned, the benefits package and the premiums that the drivers and tenants pay. The package includes health insurance, an H M O plan that they can acquire, a reimbursement benefit card, vision, dental, and a life insurance program. This year, we're paying out twenty-one hundred dollars per regular route bus. So, that's an increase of a hundred dollars over last year. So, that's three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-hundred dollars for the regular route buses and then forty-two hundred dollars for the special needs route buses, which is an increase of two hundred dollars, so a hundred for each position for a total of a hundred-and-twenty-one, eight-hundred. The trust does get audited. It's been audited by Asking Asking in the past and has found no issues and also the Office of Legislative Audit-
And also the Office of Legislative Audits, when they come down, they have looked over the trust plan and they found no issues with it. So I'm asking that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented. And any questions?
I have no questions.
I'm curious about participation of the drivers. I don't know if you have any data. But I know a lot of times people have spouses. In my case, my wife was a school teacher. She was on my policy because I, I had a better policy. So I was wondering about participation. And do you have any numbers? Is it eighty percent, fifty percent?
Yes, it's a great question. Two hundred and twenty-two eligible routes, you know, participants that we could manage on the health plan. We have very low adoption of the health plan participation. And that's because we do have spousal coverage options that are available to you in the marketplace. You have individual coverage, we have retiree programs, we have Medicare participants, TRICARE participants. So we have a range and we do track that ongoing throughout the benefit year, especially after the open enrollment season. So fifty-nine people are on the plan, on the health plan that we offer today. It is what we call a high deductible health plan. Many of you might be familiar, it's like car insurance, right? We have a deductible, helps keep the budget premiums low. But there's this deductible when the healthcare needs are actually being received. We have a reimbursement account, a twelve hundred dollar reimbursement account that's available to these individuals to help offset what will now be a sixteen hundred dollar deductible, which is a higher increased deductible starting September first. We work through Care First, we are in small group. So the rate or the cost to be in the health plan is dependent upon your age. So I don't know if any of you have experience in small group health plans, but each individual has a rate assigned by Care First, determined by their actuaries. And, and that's how that budgeting and analysis has occurred. We look at our population, we look at who's on the plan, and we then have to account for the subsidy, the funding from the, the school system, as well as what we think we can go to market to the drivers to say, this is your cost, with the goal obviously to maintain this program for maybe another couple of years or twenty years or wherever we need to go. Good question.
Yeah, I just, I guess where I was coming from is if it was a low participation, it would probably reflect in the lower premiums. Would that be fair, a fair assessment?
Well, everyone has that individual analysis of their health insurance. We focus on the driver and the way the structuring of the cost to participate is based upon the driver. That really is the focus. Now, we have very few individuals that cover their dependents and those are probably of need. Maybe there isn't a spousal employer option available to them. I think it's very common in the marketplace today that the employer looks at and focuses that, that cost for the individual employee and, and then maybe picking up, maybe throwing a percentage at the dependent. But it's really the focus on the employee. We're taking our rate to participate in the health plan from two hundred and fifteen dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars. It's a pretty sizable increase, but that's because our insurance from Care First has gone up fourteen percent this year after a ten percent last year. We're coming out of the, the pandemic. I think the insurance carriers are readjusting. And again, those are rates that are determined and set and filed against the state and they're set by Care First. So we, we are essentially an age, what's the actuarial rate, and that's what's being assigned to us.
Thank you.
You, you just answered it, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions. Mary?
It's been twenty years since we had this program and Kathy and I were there. And we remember the days when the bus drivers and the attendants didn't have any insurance at all. Sixteen hundred dollars is a big deductible. But if you have some kind of major medical issue or hospitalization and it may cost you a million dollars, a half a million dollars, or two hundred and fifty thousand, the sixteen hundred isn't so bad then. But I wish it was a way you could get this down.
But that's just to be clear.
Yeah, if I could clarify. So Care First Medical Plan that we utilize here, and I actually utilize with my employees in my operation as well, it's a sixteen hundred dollar deductible for individuals, thirty-two hundred dollars if you cover dependents. Of the sixteen hundred dollar deductible responsibility, we provide back to the drivers a twelve hundred dollar benefit on a MasterCard so that when they go pay for their prescriptions or go to the doctors for sick visits. So essentially, really, they have a four hundred dollar deductible.
Gotcha.
And then after they meet their deductible, then they go into a copay-based arrangement, which can be better pricing than deductible pricing.
Thank you.
Does that clarify?
Yes, that's very clear. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
We are fortunate to be able to offer this. And I hope that it will be a program that we continue to offer for a long time to come. Healthcare is extraordinarily expensive. But not taking advantage of, proactively of health, for healthcare has a much more significant cost and life implications. So, you know, hoping to keep people healthy, that's what we need to do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, may I have a motion?
I move.
Go ahead.
I moved that the Board of Education approved payment of four hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars to the St. Mary's County School Bus Contractors Health and Welfare Trust, which will cover the 2023-2024 school year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All others in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Watson? Use of facilities.
Good morning, everyone. Non athletics this time, but use of facilities. So as Lillian mentioned, thank you, Lillian, for your, for your report. We are very excited to have fall sports back up in full swing. And scrimmages and all those things start this week. And before we know it, we'll be, September first is our first play date. So we're anxiously awaiting the start of our competition seasons. Today I'm here. I'm sorry? Thank you.
That was the last one.
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. To provide the Board of Education with an information item on school year 2024 modifications to rental fees, staff fees, and equipment fees pertaining to the community use of school facilities. Our current fee structure has been in place and unchanged since July first of 2013. So as you know, a lot has happened since July first, 2013. And our goal has always been and will always be to provide, to make sure and ensure that our facilities are available to our community members. So we don't try to, we don't certainly, we certainly don't make any profits. In fact, we, we have losses every year when we have our communities, you know, use our facilities. So we've made a few minor changes in April of 2022, but other than that, we have not changed our fee structure since July first of 2013. Today, a couple of topics that I'm going to broach with you is obviously our current and updated regulations and brochure. Make sure that people understand how they, how they become an approved user. Review of, a review of facility use, rental fees, equipment fees, staff fees, and updated facility brochure. And then I'll finish with kind of a communication plan on how we plan to roll this out to everyone involved. Just please note that none of these changes will impact St. Mary's County Recreation and Parks for S Y twenty-four. They will have an impact next year in S Y twenty-five as our staff fees have gone up. And that's what they, to pay on category two days, which I'll explain here in a little bit. Just so everyone knows, the school system incurs costs associated with facility rental. And again, these, these costs do not fully cover our needs. So in fact, we are updating our fees currently this year to basically decrease our losses. So every time a community group comes in to use our facilities, we can, we pay that bill. Priority five, category one day. The category one day is any ten-month employee day from six AM to nine PM. So a lot of our category five groups, or excuse me, our priority five groups utilize our facilities during that time. And in years past, they have incurred no fees. So St. Mary's County pays to the, all the utilities, we pay the staff fees, we pay all the wear and tear, all those things. And we just really cannot, no longer operate in that fashion. So again, the fee increases are not meant to turn a profit. They are not meant to, you know, even break even. We are trying to minimize our losses and also trying to be able to provide the use of our facilities to all of our community groups in a reasonable manner. So there's a lot of information on these slides, but I wanted to provide them. And so some of these I will highlight in the slides after this. But on the left-hand side, you will see our current, links to our current regulations and you will see a link to our current use of facilities brochure. On the right-hand side, you will see updates to those regulations and to that brochure. And just so anyone diving into this a little bit, the old language is purple and, and struck through, and the new language would be in red. So if you really want to take a look and compare the old reg, the current regulation with the updated regulation or the, the current brochure with the updated brochure, when you see purple, that language is going to go away. And when you see red, that language is going to be added. How to become an approved user, very simple. New users need to submit a request for access, the link is there. Once approved and you submit all of your documentation that you need, then you can start utilizing and requesting use of school facilities and grounds. Use of school facility grounds requests are submitted online. You can submit them online. Again, have to become a user first. And then you would click that online button right there to request use of our facilities. Just want to make sure everyone understands that school administrators, schools will determine if a request is based on, if a request is approved or denied based on the school's availability. As you know, when you started a high school and it's kind of like a community center, right? That never closes. It's very sometimes extremely difficult to get a facility in a high school because of all the groups that we have at a high school. Our middle schools are a little bit more available and then our elementary schools are typically a little bit more available than our middle schools just because of the program that goes on at those levels. Those decisions are based on a lot of different factors. Again, availability, school's calendar, student-related activities. And most recently, a lot of our supporting staff, supporting services staff availability. As you know, we've had some shortfalls with some staff in our schools and our building service areas. And it's really hard to maintain a clean building when you have some staff issues. And then you also have a large amount of community people coming in for those staff members to keep up with that. If you need, excuse me, if you need support for that, you can certainly try calling the school. Or also there's a use of facilities page on our website that you can visit with all this information. Or simply, if you don't know where to start, you can email facilities@SM, facilitiesuse, excuse me, at smcps.org. Just review of our facility use, just that the Board of Education recognizes the need for school buildings and grounds to be available for school groups, parent-teacher organizations, and other outside groups. This has been our philosophy, this is in our policy, this is in our reg. All of this information, again, that we've talked about is to provide these facilities to people and organizations. Approved users can request facility use and ground use. If the request is approved, community groups may use our facilities. So that's just a brief overview of our facility use. And to talk, transition into our priority levels. So our priority, we have seven priority levels. And we have two categories. So that's how facility use is broken down. You, an organization is assigned a priority level. And then depending on what they request, what time, what date, weekends, holidays, what time of the day, that request is category one day or category two day. And there are fees associated with each category. Obviously, a category two day being a weekend, a holiday. There's certainly more staff fees involved with that as we have to bring someone in to make the facility available versus a category one day. We already have staff at the facility. So as you can see there, there are seven priority levels. And depending on how someone requests to be a user, they are provided a priority level assignment. Question there? No, not yet, okay. Sorry. Category one days, again, this is, just as a reminder, this is our ten-month workday, six AM to nine PM, category one. So part of our updates, hourly rental fees for priority five organizations have been established. And again, I mentioned before, before, before this presentation, category or priority five organizations did not have any fees for category one days. So we have established priority five organizations for category one. And you can see there on the chart, those fees are listed in red. Hourly rental fees for priority six and seven organizations have also been increased. And it's a small increase, the increase is anywhere from two dollars to sixteen dollars. So we're not talking major increases here for any organization, priority six or priority seven. Couple of examples listed below. Auditoriums for priority six went from forty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Middle school gym went from thirty-nine dollars to forty-seven dollars. And high school gym for priority seven went from sixty-six dollars to eighty-two dollars. So there's just a couple of examples. Again, all of this is outlined in the brochures above if you really want to compare current to, to new. Category two fees, again, this is weekends, holidays, any non-ten-month day, summer activities beyond nine o'clock or any non-ten-month employee day. The hourly rental fees for priority four through seven have been increased between two and fifteen dollars. So again, we are not increasing, again, to make any, any sort of profit. The increases that we have are, are to balance and to minimize our losses, but also to, for us to continue to offer our facilities to our community organizations. There's some examples there. Again, auditorium for priority four and five went up from seventy-four dollars to eighty-one dollars. And you can see some other examples there as well for the middle and high school gyms and classrooms. And I put those examples on there because those are probably our most used facilities from our community groups. Rental fees, outside fields, track, and tennis courts. We did actually decrease some costs as well. So we tried to balance inside costs versus outside costs. Obviously, our outside costs aren't nearly what our inside costs would be. We don't have utilities, we don't have HVAC, and we don't have a lot of things. People rent our fields or our grounds. So we did decrease baseball, softball, and practice fields at the high school levels anywhere between ten dollars, roughly about ten dollars at, at those locations. So we did decrease those. And then we've slightly increased tennis courts and things like, and things like that at the, at the high school level. Equipment fees, again, very small increases, anywhere from three to five dollars. It's important to note that these equipment fees are not to exceed five hours. So if you take a look at, if you need to rent a piano for a, an outside group to, to use a piano for their organization, the piano costs fifty-five dollars. And that's, that's up to five hours. So it's not fifty-five dollars an hour, it's fifty-five dollars for a five-hour show. So very reasonable in, in our estimations. Same thing with some of the other things listed there. We did add high school stadium lights as our turf fields have went down. We believe that we eventually have a increase in wanting to use our high school stadium fields. And that may incur some lights. Obviously, it's pretty darn expensive to turn those high school stadium lights on and to run those. But again, six, it'll cost you sixty dollars for five hours of use. That's pretty, pretty reasonable for those high school stadium lights. We do have some increase in staff fees as well. We have an, we have established rates for IT computer support. So a lot of our organizations and other groups who want to use our auditorium do request some tech support and we haven't had that really established. So we're trying to establish that. And then again, some, some incremental increases for building service hourly, lighting and sound tech hourly, and an event manager hourly. You know, use of facilities brochure isn't our regulation, it is not our policy. The brochure is not reg or policy, just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. It is meant to expedite the process for our community groups. So it is based on our regs, it's based on our policy, but it's not exact, again, as it's meant to expedite. The brochure is available on our usage of school facilities page. And then our fees will, in the future, will now be evaluated at least annually and are subject to change as needed. Our communication plan is obviously the Public Board of Education Information Item Presentation today. We will post messages on our school do brightly program informing all users of the updated regulations and associated fees. We will email, an email will be sent to all priority five and seven user organizations. There'll be one for specifically priority five groups because, again, we didn't have fees established for category one, and now we will. So we certainly want to update them on that so they can plan accordingly. And then we will send a separate email to all priority six and seven organizations to include the category one and category two increased fees. For SMCPS, obviously, the presentation today. We will also send official notification to all school-based users and approvers. So as they're taking questions at the school level, they have the information they need to answer those questions they may get. We'll put messages in the Monday message and the signal to make sure that everyone's aware as much as possible. So these changes will go into effect in January 1st of 2024. So we believe we have ample amounts of time in the next four to five months to inform all of our groups, our internal groups and our external groups. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Yes, so I have two questions for you. So you clarified that this isn't for profit. It's just to help cover the expenses that we pay. Do you have an estimation of how much we'd be saving with these changes?
Can you ask a moment, I'm sorry?
Do you have like an estimation of how much we'd be saving with these changes in terms of covering the expenses?
Yeah, I do not at this time. So again, the fees were established in 2013, and back before I was in St. Mary's County, there was a study done, and the fees were established based on a study in, I believe, 2012. So we have not changed our fees since then. And even at that time, the fees that we implemented did not cover our costs. So the percentage or the actual number of what we would save or what we would minimize our losses, I do not have that information.
All right, no worries. But I do have another question. So last meeting, Mrs. Bailey brought up the point that the state voting day of May 14th will be during our AP exams. And so I asked other few members of the board how we go about fixing this or how about, this doesn't impact our AP students. So I don't know if you already have this planned, but do you know if the buildings, the high school buildings will be used for any polls this year for the upcoming election?
Yes, all of our high schools typically are used for polling stations. I know Leonard Town High School is definitely one. I'd have to clarify with Mr. Varner, but I think all of our high schools are used.
Yeah, because we have to move around our AP students during that season. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The only question I have is you mentioned that for fees inside, it's going to be higher because you've got infrastructure costs, et cetera. And I guess my question is, isn't that a sunk cost? In other words, your heating and cooling space already, why would there be an incremental cost?
So I guess an example I would provide, Mr. Davis, would be like if a gymnasium, if the gymnasium is not being used, then the lights are not on. You know, the HVAC is the HVAC. Like there are certain areas of the building, like when it's occupied versus when it's unoccupied, are set different levels. We are experimenting with a standard set point, as Dr. Beavers has presented before. But as far as like lights and utilities and things like that, if areas aren't being used, then, you know, hopefully, you know, we have those stickers on all our light switches, right? Turn the lights off when you leave. Same premise takes place in our facilities.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you said that you pay the bill. Where does the money go when they pay you? Does it go back into your account?
It goes back in. Yes, ma'am. So there's utility fees. Obviously, that's handled by capital planning, and that's Mrs. Howe. I've presented here multiple times. So they are in charge of those kind of things. And so when we charge community groups, it goes into an account where those accounts are helped to offset those costs. They also help with, sometimes with refurbishing costs of certain equipment or facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
So when you put out the communication piece, are you going to ensure that the citizens and everybody else realize this is not to make a profit? Because some people are under the impression we're making a profit. We really, if we were able to, wouldn't charge them anything, but we have to to offset the expenses. So it's something to say, why are we doing this? And I'm sure you're going to do that anyway. So they understand, we're just trying to cut our expenses, and it's not to make a profit off you or your organization.
Correct, yes. Yes, ma'am, that will be part of our communication. And our priority six and seven groups, they are already aware of their fees. It's really the new fees for the priority five groups during the category one days, which is probably going to be the really new information that we have to make sure we inform people of. But we have a distribution list of all priority group, of all priority five users. In fact, they are, we have asked them to submit some paperwork, some documentation by August 15th to ensure that they are up-to-date 501(c)(3) organization. So we will make sure we include that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that a number of groups do use our various buildings. You give me a sense of how many community groups use our buildings just overall?
So our buildings, I would probably say consistently upwards of 20 to 30, consistently. And when I say consistently, probably weekly. Most people, obviously, Wreckin' Park as well, but most people probably try to book our gymnasiums for a period of an entire year, like every Tuesday and Thursday from now until the end of the year. And that's, you know, different organizations, basketball, softball, footsall, all kind of different organizations. Wintertime is obviously a big situation because people have to be inside to participate. But I would say consistently 20 to 30 outside organizations. And then we have other groups, performance-based groups, that use it a couple of times a year. For instance, like Ballet Caliente would be an example of a couple of shows a year.
How many priority five participants do we have, would you say?
So right now, based on the email that we sent over the summer, the distribution list, I would say we have around 30 priority five organizations.
So it's really the priority five organizations that are going to see the biggest change to things?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that information.
And I will note, like our, when you look at Wreckin' Park fees for Leonard Hall and you will look at Wreckin' Park fees for the Margaret Brent Middle School Annex, which is more of the gymnasium. Leonard Hall is more of a multi-use facility. We are certainly in line with what they charge the same organizations. So Leonard Hall is, you know, 55 an hour for less than 25 people and 75 an hour for more than 25 people. And then the Margaret Brent Annex is 75 an hour for less than 50 people and 95 an hour for 50 or more people. So that aligns pretty well with our middle school and high school gymnasium costs, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, we are done. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, August 30th. Executive session starts at 5:00 and open meeting will begin at 6:00. So at that point, we will be one week.
One week in.
Into the school year 2024.
Rolling right along.
Right.
It'll be great. We can't wait for school to open next week.
With that, we are adjourned.